Hi, this is Matt Velardebo, candidate for South Carolina House of Representatives, District 26, and you're listening to the All About Nothing Podcast.
This episode of the All About Nothing Podcast is brought to you by GOT Sound Studio. GOT Sound Studio offers a variety of experiences, music, voice and instrumental recording and production, video and still photography. GOT Sound Studio has all of your media needs met. Owned and operated by Dominique Stewart, the Nick the Geek, experienced artists as well as up and coming will find everything they need to create. Bring your media needs to one of the most talented producers and engineers in the business, Nick the Geek. You can find details by visiting GOTSoundStudio.com or calling 803-243-2302. You can also find links in the Friends of the Pod section of our website. Visit theAllAboutNothing.com.
The All About Nothing Podcast may have content and language.
That isn't appropriate for some.
Listener discretion is advised.
Welcome Nothingers to another episode of the All About Nothing Podcast. I am Barrett Gruber. It is Monday, January the 15th. Today is Martin Luther King Jr. Day here in the United States, of course, recognizing the civil rights leader, the life and accomplishments of Martin Luther King Jr. here in the States. This is episode number 190. We're going to have Emily Mayer coming up here in just a couple of minutes, of course, candidate from Bluffton, South Carolina for the town council down there. We'll talk about all that here in just a little bit once she joins us. Please subscribe and share the show. That's how we get new listeners. Also, if you can, please consider supporting the show financially by visiting our website and clicking on the support link. If you can't do that, please do us a favor, drop us a review, hit the five stars, give us a thumbs up or leave a comment. All that helps to drive our show higher in the ratings on all of these podcast platforms. Special thanks to Preach Jacobs and Soul House for letting me sit down with Preach this past episode, episode number 189. Soul House, of course, on Lincoln Street, 1223 Lincoln Street in Columbia, South Carolina. Go by, check it out. It's really a phenomenal venue. The artwork on the wall is so, it's fantastic. And again, that's coming from somebody who really doesn't know a whole lot about art, but I do recognize things that I do like. So like I said, go check it out, Soul House. It's on 1223 Lincoln Street, Columbia, South Carolina. You can follow them at their website. That is SoulHouse.art. That's S-O-U-L-H-A-U-S dot art. You can follow Preach Jacobs on Instagram, @Preach Jacobs, and you can also follow Soul House on Instagram, SoulHouse.art. There's also a link in the show notes, so you can find that there. It is 2024 and it's an election year. And I do work the polls for the elections and I need to make this something that everyone recognizes, everyone does. If you haven't registered to vote, go register. I believe in most of the states in this country, you can now register online. So just Google it. Say, Google your zip code and then voter registration and then go do it. Just take care of it. Get it done now. If you're already registered to vote, it's a good idea to check your voter registration. And one of the things you can do is you can visit our website and actually check your voter registration. The website address, theAllAboutNothing.com/voter. Very simple. We're not going to store any of your data. It's actually going to go to the US voter registration or some link like that, but it's not, we're not keeping your information, but do that. Go check your registration. Make sure that you know what your precinct is. Make sure you know who your candidates are. Do the research. Know all of that information that you can. All right. Coming up in a minute, we're going to have Emily Mayer to join me to discuss her candidacy and get to know Emily. And we will do that here on the All About Nothing Podcast in just a minute. All right. Welcome back to the All About Nothing Podcast. Of course, I'm Barrett Gruber. And this week's episode, I am joined by Emily Mayer, who is one of the candidates for Bluffton, South Carolina's Town Council. Welcome, Emily. Thank you for being here.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Super excited.
Yeah. And how many candidates are running currently?
There are two candidates in the race and both of them are named Emily.
Oh, no.
Mm-hmm. Not ideal.
What is the other candidate's last name?
It starts with a B. So she'll be first on the ballot. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, that means, that means she has to be forgettable. I'm sure she's a lovely person. So just to make sure everybody knows, your website is EmilyMayerSC.com and donations are currently open. So as a candidate, that's very important for everyone to know because I think that for the most part, every candidate we have on, the only thing, and you didn't ask, but the only thing that they mostly ask all the time is please push the website. Please help people make donations. Because running a campaign is expensive.
It is. And the things that add up that you don't consider, like postage to mail postcards, like, you know, like you're like, oh yeah, I have to print postcards, but then you're like, oh, it's like 51 cents per postcard stamp and you have to mail 1,500 of them. Like that's a huge piece of the budget.
That's how much postcards are now or postcard stamps are is?
Yeah. I mean, I bought for a regular mail, I just buy the forever stamps. So I don't actually know how much those are up to these days, but for a roll of 100 stamps for postcards, it's $51. So I would assume, I mean, my math isn't great, but I think that means 51 cents.
You're in South Carolina. It might be above bar.
I used to teach.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So and we'll talk about that here a little bit. So before we get into anything, just so everybody knows who you are and what it is that you're about, tell me about you. Tell me about your family. Just give me an idea. Phil, Charlotte, Eliana. I pronounced that correctly, right?
You did, yeah.
Oh, perfect. So tell me about you all.
Oh, my goodness. Well, we're a 202 family. Charlotte just turned two at the end of December. And Ellie was born, Eliana was born at the end of May. So we are, you know, full chaos over here at the Mayer household, but we wouldn't have it any other way. My husband and I are the perfect yin and yang. I am very type A and he is very zen and it works out beautifully in the midst of all of the chaos. But no, honestly, I wouldn't have it any other way. I, you know, two little girls who are just happy and healthy and that's all a person could possibly want. So.
That's great. And so originally from New Jersey, right?
That's where I came from before I was here. Yes.
Okay. How long ago did you all move to Bluffton?
So we left New Jersey in March of 2020 when the world shut down.
Wow. That had to have been an experience. What is it like to move during a global pandemic? I mean, and not just to move, but move like 700, 800 miles?
Yeah. Making friends as an adult is hard. Like nobody tells you that. Like you're like, oh no, as a teenager, when you're awkward, like no, making friends as an adult is extremely difficult.
Yeah.
Especially when you move as far away as we did, especially in the middle of a pandemic, right? Like I was on Zoom with people for, I was trying to join organizations and find my place and we were all on Zoom and it probably took like a good 18 months before I met any of these people in person. It's like, I lived through it and still it feels surreal to look back on.
It's really odd to think of that, you know, it's only, we've only really been out of it for about a year and a half, two years, and that it started in, you know, 2020, that we lived through something that only usually only happens about every hundred years or so. And the pandemic previous to that, previous to the Spanish flu was sometime in the mid 1600s was, and it was in Europe and it wasn't, it's surreal to think that it was only, it was only three years ago that it, almost four years ago now that it started and how normal things have gotten back to. It just doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like it should have gotten back to normal this quickly, just based on how bad it was.
Right, right. But then there are also some things that I'm like, I will never do that again, right? Like it was just Charlotte's birthday and she's blowing out her birthday candles. And I'm like, yeah, now that we've lived through COVID, this feels very different.
As a, and I know this is just, just speaks to my own anxiety, but the idea of watching somebody blow out birthday candles and then being like, oh, I want a piece. I don't. And that was, that was before COVID. And I've told, I've told people, and I think I've mentioned it on the podcast before, but I have, and I have been diagnosed by a psychiatrist, psychologist, I'm sorry, as having halitophobia, which is the fear of bad breath. So for me, COVID was almost a blessing because I could wear a mask and hold my breath around people and they didn't know I was doing it. And I've always, I've always tried to like maintain a state of people not knowing that I are recognizing that I was doing it. So the masks for me were a blessing. I was happy to wear them everywhere I went.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, as a teacher, because I taught through COVID in the mask time, it was really good because, you know, there are always those random moments where you feel like your face is maybe louder than it should be in response to a question. And behind a mask, you never had to worry about that.
That's true. That's true. So originally being from New Jersey, this is, this is sort of the fun question, I guess. Football fan?
NFL fan. Yeah. Clearly not college football because we're recording during the national championship. So.
We have to, we have to maintain the idea that we both watched it.
I mean, I can have an opinion on it, but.
Yeah. Well, it's not Rutgers. It's not Princeton. So yeah, exactly. So who's your team? Eagles, Jets or Giants?
I love this question because it's none of them.
Oh.
So my husband used to work for the New York Jets.
Okay.
So I know way too much about the Jets organization and how sad it is to both be a fan and work for them at the same time. Had like a super front row close up seat to that for a good chunk of time. But I was a Tom Brady fan. I started, that was how I first started watching football, was their very first Super Bowl that the Patriots were in, and that was just, the rest is history. So when my husband and I first started dating, he knew, like I was very upfront about it. I was like, listen, I root for the Patriots. Tom Brady is my guy. Take it or leave it. It made things a little entertaining for a while there. And then when he left the Patriots and ended up on the Buccaneers, still obviously rooted for him and was so happy to see him, see him win for Tampa Bay. Was happy for those Tampa Bay fans. And it was funny because then my husband was like, oh yeah, Tom Brady is not that bad after hearing all this for so long. Now that Tom Brady doesn't play anymore, if you asked me, I would have told you I was a Patriots fan, not a Tom Brady fan.
Okay.
It wasn't until he left the team that I realized that I was actually a Tom Brady fan. And now that he retired, it doesn't, nothing, yeah, it doesn't really matter to me. The stakes are pretty low. I play fantasy football, so I can still have some stake in the game when we watch our red zone on Sunday.
Yeah.
But.
How'd you do in your fantasy league this year?
Not great.
How many, how many teams are in your fantasy league?
Not enough. We could always. I made the playoffs by default, I think.
Oh, okay. So not many teams in your.
Right, right, right. Yeah. But I mean, Kirk Cousins was my quarterback and that, you know, yeah, it was not great. It was not great. So, but I do enjoy football. I enjoy watching it. I just don't necessarily have a vested interest anymore. Like my blood pressure is much more stable on Sundays than it previously was.
So as a Falcons fan, I will say, the New England Patriots of 2017 were the worst team in the entire league. And I have never seen a league protect a quarterback like they did for Tom Brady during that Super Bowl. I have never in my life seen more defensive hold calls in a Super Bowl where you should just let them play than that. There were more decent, I swear, I'm not going to check the statistics on this, but there were more defensive hold calls in that game than the entire season. So.
So if we get together my next trip to Columbia, I'll have to show you some footage that was captured of me during that Super Bowl because I was like, it's stuff, I mean, it was before TikTok was really a thing, but like I can only imagine it would have been like a viral TikTok, like jumping on things. It was chaos, truly chaos. So next time we're together in Columbia, I'll have to pull those out of the vault and share those with you.
I'll just tell you, I was at Epcot during that game and I'm wearing a Matt Ryan jersey. We're sitting on the side of the lake at Epcot, watching the fireworks. I have people that are literally passing by as the Falcons are leading 28 to three. People going, man, the Falcons are playing great. They look great. And then the fireworks ended. We, I have to stop watching it because I literally had my iPad. I was sitting there watching the game and we're getting on the bus and I hear a bunch of the New England fans in the back of the bus start screaming. And I'm like, that can't be good. So we get back to the hotel and turn it on and it's tied. And I'm like, how did this happen? I had to go and watch the game. I had to go and watch the second, the fourth quarter over to see what happened. And basically the Falcons, they, for some reason, they decided to pass and what they should have done is just run the ball and run out the clock, but they didn't. So.
How did you end up in Epcot on Super Bowl Sunday when your team was in the Super Bowl?
The thing is, when you plan a trip to Disney, which have you all done Disney yet?
We're, well, we're doing it in March.
Okay. How, so for us, we planned, we started planning our Disney seven months before.
Oh, okay.
So the, and never would have thought the Falcons were going to make the Super Bowl. Didn't, it didn't make any sense. They're the Falcons. They've been around since 1966. The idea of them making it to the Super Bowl, the one year that I can't watch in front of a television or with friends or whatever, it didn't even occur to me. Didn't make any, that idea. And then as we get, we progress through the season and they're, you know, they've only lost like one game. It's like, oh my gosh, they're going to, they could potentially make it to Super Bowl. And I'm looking at the dates and I'm like, I'm like, okay, so we'll be at Disney, but that's okay. I asked my wife, we can go to, I can go to like ESPN Zone and I can watch the game at ESPN Zone. And then we got further along to see that, oh, we're supposed to be at Epcot that night and we're going to watch the fireworks. And my girls are only two at the time, so I can't leave her alone. I can't leave her alone at Epcot with them. So like, it was, it was, it was, I love, I love visiting Disney, but it was so miserable.
The happiest place on earth. It was not.
It wasn't because like we get back to our resort and the fans are down there at the bar outside, just like literally right outside of our hotel, our room. And I can hear them cheering and I'm watching overtime for the Super Bowl. And I'm like, and my father-in-law is there and he goes, well, is it, you know, how is, how does it, how does it feel to make it to the Super Bowl? And I was like, I don't know. I've never been there. So, okay. So what about, what about baseball? Any baseball in there?
I grew up as a Mets fan. My parents are both from New York. My grandparents were from New York, Jewish Yorkers, New York Mets, all the way.
So that's devastating every single year. You know what?
Every year. You know what? I just like, don't, I don't even expect it, like how you were like, there's no way the Falcons would have been in this. That's how I feel about the Mets. The only times they've ever gotten me excited, I have been so disappointed. So I just don't even get excited.
I understand. Hey, at least if you have MLB TV, at least you get to watch them here. I can't watch the Braves games here. So we have to stream those from another source. So according to the 2020 census, Bluffton's population was nearly 28,000, which was according to the census, according to the last census is 120% more. And according to estimates, it looks like Bluffton is somewhere around 32,000 or so now. How is that, how is that having, what sort of impact does that have on the town of Bluffton? How does that happen as a resident? What do you all see as far as the impact of that sort of influx of the population?
First and foremost, and every single door that I have knocked on and talked to voters at have given me the same exact answer, our roads. Our roads were not ever meant to traffic as many people on a daily basis as are currently traveling on our roads. So whether people are traveling to and from Savannah, to and from Hilton Head Island, to and from Beaufort, like these roads were not built for 32,000 people. So every day we seemingly get a traffic alert on our phone that such and such road is shut down for an accident. Yeah. We're not a city, right? There's not really like a workaround for that. You might have to go like 20 minutes out of your way and then everyone else is also going that way. So then, you know, it's, it's a nightmare. So every single voter that I talk to, traffic infrastructure is their biggest complaint because Bluffton started as like just Old Town Bluffton, a few square miles and blocks in Old Town. And now we're all the way out, you know, basically Jasper County, Savannah area and building more and more houses every day, which is great. You know, I think there's a reason that all these people love Bluffton. There's a reason we moved here and wanted to start our family here. Clearly we are not alone in that. But I think when some of these decisions were being made 20, 30, 40 years ago for some of these development contracts, we had no idea what was going to happen with COVID, with the population boom, with all of it. And so now we are living the reality of those, of those decisions.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And it's not, it's not just the traffic. I imagine that it's got to put a strain on utilities and things like that as well. Cause being a coastal town, you're not right on the coast, but you're obviously going to be subjected to the, the needs of say water resources and things like that as well. So I imagine that in the progress that Bluffton makes towards trying to build out for this influx of residents and businesses and things like that, that, that also is going to take a toll or at least have to be accounted for.
Absolutely. And I mean, our schools are feeling it. They built a new high school, May River High School, four years ago now, maybe, maybe five, right before COVID and it's already over capacity. I mean, we are just bursting at the seams with our schools. So we will see.
Yeah. Yeah. As a teacher or as a former teacher, well, let me ask you, what was it that drove you to retire from, from teaching or resign from teaching? I guess retirement is harder to do.
Retire sounds nicer. It was multifaceted. So when I went out on maternity leave with Charlotte, there were some issues. They never got a leave replacement for me. So my severe special needs students were left three months, you know, with, with their paraprofessionals as their, as their leads. And when I came back, I had some opinions about that, that weren't necessarily appreciated. But also as time goes on, the stress of the job just really wears on you. And as a new parent, I was coming home feeling frustrated about work and I wasn't able to take that hat off and switch gears and, and really focus on my new baby. I wasn't being the best me. And you know, the ever growing concerns about my safety in a school building on a day-to-day basis. You know, my husband looked at me and he was like, maybe we need to see what else is out there. You know, there was one day when I was eight months pregnant, that there was a threat to the school that I was in at the time. And the choice was to take the day off of school and stay home and guarantee my safety. But then I would lose that day off of my FMLA when it was time for me to go out on maternity leave. So it just becomes like a really real situation. Once you're a parent that you're like, this isn't just about me anymore. And so ultimately, you know, with the support of my husband and the additional work that I had been doing outside of the classroom, some doors opened up and some opportunities opened up and was able to leave and haven't looked back.
Yeah. I can, I can tell you from our own personal decisions as far as our children are homeschooled. And my, my wife has a bachelor's in early childhood education. So that works out perfectly to be able to homeschool our children. My son is a senior in high school and has been, I want to say, he has been homeschooled since, I want to say, middle school. I think that's correct. But my decision on why we should have them homeschooled wasn't anything to do with anything wrong with the public school education system. Lexington One that we live in has a great program. And, and there are, there's, there's plenty of advancement classes for the, for my son when he was there. But ultimately for me, it came down to the number of bomb threats that were happening, the number of, number of times that the students would be locked down because there was a threat to the school or someone on social media posted something. And so it just, it came down to, not necessarily that I was worried about his safety because it was, they were all idle threats, but it, a lot of it came down to how much time is being wasted in the school system between walking back and forth to class, the amount of actual instruction time that the students were getting. And it's not, it's not to say that the teachers were doing a poor job. I think a lot of it came down to what the administration's expectations were of the teachers and the students. And then the fact that outside of the schools, there is so much exterior influence that isn't positive or a positive, positive influence on public education. You know, right now Moms for Liberty is out there trying to ban books in classes that don't exist.
Right, right.
So that's, it's, that's, so a lot of that played into, you know, would he get a better education at home under this current, under this current system? And, and that's ultimately what we came to. And then the girls became of age and they're advanced for their, their, their years anyway. So if they were, if they were in regular school, regular public school, they'd be, they'd be sitting in a year behind where they are now. So.
Right. No. And I mean, ultimately as a person who likes to advocate for public education, my voice as a parent goes much farther than my voice as a public school teacher. So you know, I was kind of not stifled or pushed to the side. I just could feel that it wasn't appreciated when I was on the inside. And now that I'm on the outside, no one has what to say about that, right? They're like, oh, you're a parent. Feel free to speak your mind. I'm like, what you wish for?
Yeah. No, no, I'm, 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 I am a product of public education and teachers are stifled. Teachers were stifled 30 years ago when I was in school. So it, it, people, from an administrative standpoint to the PTO organization, the parent teacher organizations, teachers have got to be given more respect and be given the opportunity to teach the students in a way that will benefit the students the most. And they, and that's just not available now. It's, there's too much outside influence. There's too much politics involved in school. So anyway, all of that to say, so you, you resigned from being a teacher?
Yes. Yes, I did.
So Bluffton is one of the many historic towns located near the coast of South Carolina, of course. How important is it to you and your campaign that the town council maintained the heritage while also taking advantage of the growth opportunities?
Well, I think, I think they have to go together, right? Like the people who moved here loved the culture and heritage and charm that Bluffton offered. And whether that's because of the Low Country, May River scene, or whether that was, you know, the true, the history of Beaufort County, right? We have the incredible story of Robert Smalls and all of that. Like there's, there's so much rich, good stuff to learn about and appreciate about Beaufort County as a whole and Bluffton specifically. And I mean, at least for me, that was part of the allure. So I think you have to find a way to marry the growth of the town with the intention of why people came here to begin with. And that's not always easy, but when you have a town council of four council members and the mayor, and in our town, the mayor's vote carries the same weight as the four council members. So you know, three votes will, will, will win on any given issue. And currently four of those people are people whose family have been here for generations and live in that old town area where, where things are, you know, more walkable and just more, more pedestrian friendly and business friendly. And there's the May River that goes through down there and out, and out here in my part of town, it looks a lot different. But we're still part of the town of Bluffton. So making sure that there are somebody on town council who represents the way that the town has grown and developed and changed, while also bringing the perspective of, I completely understand that I wanted to move here because of all the work that y'all have done to make this a great town. So really trying to find the balance of marrying those two and respecting the, the history that has led us to have the success that we have. You know, Bluffton is one of the fastest growing municipalities in the state. And there's a reason for that, right? That didn't just happen by accident. So making sure that we are intentional in the decisions being made while also bringing the perspective of somebody who is newer, but. of somebody who is newer, but who has, whose voice and perspective hold just as much weight as the people who live in Old Town and their families have been here for generations.
Yeah. Did, uh, did you get an opportunity to eat at though, the original Wild Wing Cafe before it closed?
I did, yes.
We still have a Wild Wing Cafe here, so uh, I don't know how we benefit from that, but it's still, it's still here. One of the, one of the issues that, uh, that you mentioned as far as intentional, uh, intentional infrastructure planning, transportation and mobility, uh, what is, what, what does that mean as far as a town like Bluffton?
Well, I can tell you what it doesn't mean. It doesn't mean clogging it up with traffic circles, which is one of the proposed solutions to the problem currently on the table. But so we do have certain restrictions, right? There's, there are very few roads in town that the town actually oversees. A lot of them are county, a lot of them are state. So really working with those partnerships between those groups. Um, and you know, thankfully because of the work I already do at the state house with some of the members of our elected delegation, the knowledge that I have about those state departments and bureaus that get all of these decisions done. Um, I think I'm already off on a different foot than maybe somebody else maybe, um, having these conversations. I think I have just a, a stronger institutional knowledge about all of that. But um, again, keeping that spirit of the Low Country, we have roads that you can't widen because the trees that line them are, are protected, right? So there are nuances to these conversations that I don't think that every day Blufftonian has the full grasp of. And so a lot of it for me comes down to voter education. Why, why we can't necessarily just put a traffic light anywhere? Why we can't widen the roads to just allow more of that vehicle traffic to pass through. These are things that maybe when some of these people lived other places were solutions to their problem, but uniquely to Bluffton are not options on the table right now. So one of the many things that, uh, town council does is approve development plans. And we have two or three development plans in the next five to 10 years that are going to be expiring. Um, and so thinking about moving forward, do we need to be accepting more development plans? Or do we need to be revisiting the ones we've already approved? Do, if we're accepting more, do we need to have a higher threshold of how many units are for affordable, uh, living or workforce housing? These are conversations that town council is able to lead on. Um, that could really make an impact at this make or break moment that I feel like Bluffton is currently experiencing in the boom that we're in.
Yeah, one of the things that goes on here and, and so I live in West Columbia, which is, is obviously west of Columbia. But uh, they, uh, because there is, uh, currently expansion going on as far as beautification and improvements to the main thorough few, through, main thorough through. Am I, that might not be right. Anyway. Yeah, thoroughfare. So the, the road that goes from Columbia to Lexington is, uh, is Interstate one or Highway one, uh, which actually runs from Maine all the way to Key West. Uh, and right now they are going, they are doing projects, the DOT, the South Carolina DOT, as well as some, some federal money. Um, they are doing projects to, uh, improve the roads. Uh, and, and, and one of the things that West Columbia does, Mayor Tim Miles, uh, that hit the town council of West Columbia or the city council of West Columbia, because they, they're designated as a city, not a, and not as a town. But uh, so attached to some of these DOT projects that are being done to the roads, they, the city of West Columbia is investing in, uh, projects to add more, uh, walkway or you know, pat, walking paths, uh, or, or, or crosswalks across some of these roads. So that, uh, safety is, is the biggest concern.
Right.
Uh, burying telephone or power lines and telephone lines along the road. So that, you know, we don't get a lot of ice here, but in the opportu, in the situations where there might be a winter storm uh, or, 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 or bad weather at all, it, it takes, it takes some of the potential influence of weather and, and, and things like that environment out of the utilities. Uh, so that's, I, I assume that that's some of the things that, 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 that as well, the town of Bluffton would, would have on its plate in the, in the situations where there are improvements going on.
Yeah, yeah. And looking at if we can make some of these surfaces more permeable. Because even though I have three different pieces to my platform, I'm learning more and more from all of the conversations that I'm having and the knowledge that I'm gaining, that they're all interconnected. So the more roads and sidewalks and driveways that we are creating in our development that are not made out of permeable, um, surface material, the more runoff we're having into the May River. The, the more impact a storm has, you know, because it doesn't, it's not able to, to have the proper runoff system. So there's really so much that goes into these decisions that I don't even think I necessarily understood when I first, uh, signed up to run as a candidate, that I'm very thankful for people, uh, to have guided me on this way and given me a lot of great information. Uh, but yeah, there are absolutely, you know, people love talking about how we love the May River and it's so beautiful and it's so this and so that. Um, but there are. And it is, it absolutely, I mean, one look at the May River and you fall in love. There's no doubt about that. But then at the same time, our town council previously rejected, um, installing electric vehicle charging stations in town. Like, so on one hand, we're talking about how much we love the May River. On the other hand, we're rejecting initiatives that wouldn't cost us any money because there's grant money out there for these types of projects.
Right.
Um, and would benefit all of that. We love our May River narrative so much.
What sort of, uh, and, 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 because we've had some, we've had, we've had some, we've had some storms in the past couple of weeks that have been perfectly aligned with, I guess, the lunar cycle. Uh, and Charleston has seen some pretty serious flooding, uh, in the past, last week. Uh, does, does Bluffton, does Bluffton ever feel the effects coming like tidal surge coming up the, uh, the May River?
We don't feel it the same way, um, that you see in Charleston. That's obviously just such an extreme real example. But we do have, there's, um, 170 that goes Savannah, Bluffton, Beaufort. And you can take that road to get on 95 or to go towards Charleston. Um, and seemingly every time there is a heavy rain, it overflows from the, over the shoulder. You're really, instead of it being a two lane road, it's really like a one lane road because half of each of the lanes is kind of flooded. So everyone's just riding the middle, uh, obviously completely unsafe. But I mean, even in my own backyard, um, there, there's land behind our backyard that's only zoned for green space. It can only be developed as a park if it's developed at all, which is fantastic. Yay, green space. We love green, green space. However, the way that the land was developed to create our home and the property that we live on, there's this huge, like, opposite of a sandbar anytime it rains. So right now, and I'm sure after tomorrow, it'll be three times larger. Nice little pond retaining pool going on back there. We get some ducks that come on over. You know, it's really quite, my, my bird dog has a field day with it. Uh, he just, you know, sticks his head on the couch, looking out the window, seeing what birds are going to come, come pick up some worms and some goodies out of that little puddle that we have going on back there. But I mean, that's the reality, right? That's, that's part of living in a coastal environment, but also the impacts that we're seeing from, from the changes in our, in our environment and our weather.
Alligators.
We do have a little baby alligator. We have, in front of our house, there's an actual pond that was meant to be a pond. And last spring, we found a, there wasn't one previously, but we found a little baby alligator and then disappeared for a while. And now it's back and it's a little bigger than it was. Uh, so that's one we keep our eye on. We'll, we'll be like, oh, where, where can we spot them? And our dog, who thinks anything that moves is his best friend, it stays on a very tight leash when we're walking around that pond.
Yeah, yeah. We, we actually just recently, uh, at last, last summer, uh, there was actually, uh, some, some videos from people that they had posted online of alligators in the canal up here in Columbia. Cause we have a canal that's diverted off of the Broad River so that it provides, when it was before the, the flooding in 2015, the, uh, the, the canal would provide, uh, electro power. There was an electro power plant that was attached to it as well as that's where a lot of the drinking water came from for the city.
Should not have alligators in it.
There is an alligators. Yeah, there were, there was, there was at least two. And, uh, and, and I have not seen them when I have walked down there on the, on the canal trail. But, uh, the, the, I, I recognized where they filmed those and it was, it was a good six or seven foot alligator. So.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's the thing about our little alligator out here is that there weren't other alligators in this pond before. So a bird must have picked up an egg from one of the other nearby ponds along the way and dropped it. And here's now this one all alone by his lonesome little alligator. And that's fine. I do not need more than that. I'm good.
Yeah.
But it's, it's funny to think about like, oh, well, he couldn't have just appeared, right? Like something had to have happened here.
I think, I think alligators in South Carolina are the same as pythons in Florida. People get them and they're like, oh, why did I get an alligator? And then they just let it go somewhere. Uh, I don't know. Uh, you know, I, to, what, 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 I can't think of what the word is, but they, they, they're like glamour pets for some reason. It's weird.
In New Jersey, we used to have like pigs. It was like the same kind of concept.
Okay. No, no, I know, I know why, I know why people in New Jersey have pigs. That's how you dispose of bodies. What about, what about affordable housing in Bluffton? Uh, I, I, when I think of a lot of the coastal towns, uh, Charleston, Beaufort, uh, I, I don't always think affordable. So I am, because you know, West Columbia is, is one of the least expensive places in the state to live. Or I guess, uh, as far as being in proximity to the capital. And, and that was one of the reasons I moved here from Atlanta was because it was a relatively inexpensive place to live. What, what is it that on town council or the town of Bluffton, you hope to, uh, influence and, and, and potentially set a path for as far as affordable housing?
Yeah.
Affordable living, I say.
More than just housing, right? It's, it's small business owners being able to pay their rent on their, on their properties for their businesses. It's being able to have access to childcare, which is a huge, huge issue. I know not unique to Bluffton, but Bluffton is really, really feeling it with the young family surge that we're seeing right now. But with housing specifically, a lot of it again comes down to education and breaking the stigma of people hear affordable housing and they think huge apartment complexes and transient communities and, and you know, there's this, there's this negative stigma around the concept when really all I'm saying, and when I say this to people who weren't on board with me beforehand, but they hop on board after I say it, the people who work in Bluffton need to be able to afford to live in Bluffton, right? Why are people coming from Savannah, Poole or Hardyville, Ridgeland? People, Bluffton used to be the town where the Hilton Head workers lived because they couldn't afford to live on Hilton Head, right? Well, now they can't afford to live in Bluffton, so they're just moving farther and farther out. And now they're driving forty-five minutes to an hour to do the work for our community. And so when I say to people, well, I just think the people who work in Bluffton deserve to be able to live here. Everyone's like, you know what? You're right. And I'm like, yeah, duh. It should, it should be that easy. Um, so right now what's in place is that when town council approves new housing developments, um, a certain percent of them have to have, uh, a certain percent of the units have to be for affordable living, for affordable housing, workforce housing. Um, I would one want to up that threshold. I, I think we're already behind the eight ball. We can't just be doing the bare minimum when it comes to requirements. And clearly incentivizing hasn't done the job thus far. Um, but also working with industries, like we have a big healthcare industry around, you know, we need nurses and for nursing homes and for the medical pavilions and all of these things. So finding opportunities to partner with those institutions to say, let's do a nurse's workforce, community housing. Let's do, you know, there's a school down the road that has a big chunk of land that they're not currently using. Can we build some single family homes there that educators and their, can raise their families in? And they're, you know, they don't have to pay the tax because it's on the school's property already. Are there ways that we can, um, improve or include deed structure? So that should somebody live on their property for a certain amount of time, they can pass it on to somebody else and keep, you know, the, the rate or, or whatever their payment process is down. Um, so there are absolutely things that can be done that aren't currently being done. You know, uh, the state passed last year, um, a law that would allow for state ATAC money to go towards affordable housing grants. So in Bluffton, we have local ATAC for, for tourism purposes, but you could argue that being able to, um, staff your business would impact tourism. So we've been able to use that towards affordable housing, but the state passed a similar, uh, provision in a law last year that would allow for then state money additional to local money to go towards that. My understanding is that there's a lot of surprise, surprise red tape that goes, uh, into that. That has been really holding up our municipality from being able to utilize, um, those funds. So again, leveraging the relationships that I have with members of our delegation to say, y'all passed this bill. The intent of this bill was to be able to use additional ATAC funding for affordable housing. What I'm hearing from our people is that these are the stumbling blocks that are in place, making that difficult. Y'all need to go back in and revise your policy or talk to the people, you know, at whatever department, um, to make that more streamlined. Um, just being really real in those conversations. Um, and I don't think, um, anyone from our delegation would ever accuse me of being anything less than real with them, for better or worse. So, uh, using that to benefit the people of Bluffton who, who truly deserve to be able to afford to live here.
Yeah, I think, and, and that's one of the things that people need to really consider and, and not just in Bluffton, but the people that live, the people that work in a community, that live in a community, spend their money in that community. So that, that, that's, that's got to be one of the selling points, uh, for sure. Digital infrastructure, how's, how's the internet in Bluffton?
Well, I don't know if you have noticed a couple of times during this call, but I've gotten, uh, your internet is unstable once or twice and like.
I did, I didn't see it on my end. Uh, so.
So I mean, there, there is always room for improvement. I mean, I think we really saw that in COVID, right? When, when parents were homeworking and kids were learning at home and was sucking all of that broadband usage, right? Even families that had access to strong broadband were experiencing difficulties, let alone families that didn't have access or lived in a more remote area or, or any of those things. So thankfully there have been some federal, uh, dollars to go into that program. But I know that that's still a conversation that's happening at a state level, uh, hopeful, hopefully trickling down, you know, for us to feel the real impacts of. Thankfully Beaufort County worked with Hargray, which is one of our internet providers down here to, uh, provide hotspots to families who needed them. But I don't know if you've ever used a hotspot, but they're not always the best. So good in theory, but not always in practice. Um, and I think, you know, that was some of the learning that we did as we went through that, through that COVID virtual learning time. And you know, tomorrow, because the weather, now we have a virtual learning day and I find myself wondering again, well, like, if the wind blows and a tree falls and, you know, if it's, if it's not safe enough for us to be driving buses over our bridge, what happens when the wifi goes out and these kids are expected to be on Zoom all day? But thankfully not currently my problem to deal with and I can take that issue on another day.
Well, and I've said it, but as governor, uh, you're going to have, that is something you're going to have to be concerned about. So, uh, the May River, uh, landscape, according to your webpage, uh, which again, EmilyMayorSC.com, uh, where donations can be made. It's what drives people to Bluffton. So the town council in a way is a steward of the environment. In your, and I know it's, it's only been a few years, but in your experience living in Bluffton, how have you seen the town council, uh, make an impact environmentally to the, the May River landscape?
So initially, when I first moved here, there was a restriction on single use plastics.
Oh, okay.
Since then, I don't know, again, maybe COVID, people were like, oh, costs as a business owner have been really impacted because I, I don't know where the loophole was created, but we have strayed away from that. So like anytime we order takeout, it comes in a wonderful styrofoam container and a plastic bag. And I'm like, ah, the May River. I hear it screaming in my head while I'm eating, you know, my meal. Um, so that was something that they did implement previously that I'm curious to learn more about and. So that was something that they did implement previously that I'm curious to learn more about and, and revisit. Once I get on town council, get a better understanding as to why that happened and, and what can be done. If it was a cost associated thing, are there ways to incentivize? I'm always a big believer that you would, I would rather incentivize somebody to do the right thing than force them to do the right thing because I don't want people being like, oh, well, the government made me do this. I didn't really want to do this, right? Even though we all love the May River and we want to do, we can to protect it. Um, so that's definitely, that's something that they have implemented in the past.
I'll tell you, one of the things that I have recognized in, in just around Columbia, around West Columbia, that sort of thing, is those, uh, water fountains that are specifically designed to fill up the, the multi-use water bottles, you know, the, uh, and, and the number of, the number of times that I myself would use them, uh, if they were available. It, you know, it's, uh, and, and it's such a, it's such a little thing.
Yes.
To, to, to see them. Because when I first started seeing them, I was like, it's crazy. Who's going to fill up their water bottle there? But then, but then like, I, I, I don't have to walk around and, 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 and even, even with those things, those, those water fountains now, I, I, even if I don't have a water bottle, like a, like a multi-use water bottle, if I have a water bottle, like a plastic one, I'll fill it up in those things.
Exactly. Exactly. No, and our parks do have those. And so, yeah, that's a great point. That's something that I don't even think twice about. It's just like second nature. Like, yeah, of course I'm gonna refill my water bottle.
Yeah, absolutely.
But also, you know, looking, we did an environmental impact study about our walking trails and ways that we can improve our walking trails, not only for, you know, pedestrian safety and, and walkability of town, but also again, that, that surface area, um, being able to be made out of, uh, a material that is more beneficial to our environment. When we're using some of these newer, newer developments, are there ways that we can keep some of the trees up instead of just coming in and knocking them all down and starting from there? We have one community here that did a really good job, um, preserving their trees. So when you drive in, even though there are brand new houses that are currently being constructed, they still have trees that are a hundred plus years old right there in their front yard because they didn't just come in and, and knock them all down. Um, so I think that that is a really important piece to it all because those trees, not only are they stunning, but there's a, there's an environmental benefit, right? The, the older the tree is, the more of a benefit it provides the environment around it. Um, so being more intentional in some of those decisions when we're partnering with developers for some of these newer communities to say, you know, are there things that we can be doing instead of leveling off all of this land and knocking everything down? Yeah, that might be the quicker way to go, but is it the better way to go? Quicker is not always better.
Right. Yeah. I don't, uh, my, uh, my father would tell me a story. There was a, uh, so growing up in Atlanta, taking 85 out of Atlanta north, uh, there was a, a large, I want to say it was a, an oak tree that was along the interstate and it was, it was, I want to say it was probably a hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty year old. I mean, this was a tree that saw the civil war. To give you an idea of how old my father is, uh, anyway, uh, but, uh, that when they, when they expanded interstate 85, uh, there was a petition to save the tree to, to somehow figure out how to get the interstate around that particular tree. Uh, the tree wound up dying anyway, because, uh, I don't think they took into consideration just the amount of environmental damage that's done by building an interstate, uh, that close to, you know, uh, but, um, you know, that, that's one of those, that's one of the things about the coastal areas, especially like the south coastal areas of South Carolina into, into Georgia, Savannah, down towards, you know, uh, Buford, well, Buford, all the way down to Brunswick and things like that. Is those, those live oak trees that just sort of, that just sort of curl themselves over, over the roads and yeah, the idea of, of losing those just to the progress of, of population growth. Uh, and I use progress very loosely, but that's, that's essentially, you know, that's essentially the idea is that, that, uh, you want to maintain that, that feel, that look, because not only are those trees old and historic, but the, I think the environment around them benefits from them still being there. Uh, you know, when it comes to hurricane season, that sort of thing. The reason those live oaks have been around the way they have is because they've evolved into the, 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 they, they don't grow super tall. The wind sort of whips across the top of them. It keeps them shorter and it gives them that curl, but that's also protection for property and things around because the, the wind tends to, 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 to avoid, you know, flying underneath it.
They almost become a canopy, a safekeeping over the homes and the, the areas that they surround.
My meteorologist friend Aaron is going to be so annoyed at how poorly I describe weather. All right. Hard sell.
Not everybody can be great at all of the things. So if meteorology is one of your areas of weakness, that's.
Look, there were, when I first started in radio, that's all I got to do was time and weather. That was it. Forty-five degrees right now, cloudy skies here in West Columbia. Yeah, that's, that's it. That's all I would do. So that was, that was a first good year and a half, two years of being on the radio was just time and weather.
Invigorating.
Exactly. So, all right, hard sell. Why should the town of Bluffton elect you over the other in this election, uh, that's coming up?
I just think I bring a really unique vantage point to the table. I think it's very rare to find somebody who is a young mother, but also has the institutional knowledge that I have. And you know, not, not every person cares about all of the things that are on my policy platform, but I think there's enough on my policy platform that touches the reality of everyday life for people in Bluffton, especially on the newer side of town where things look much different and the town continues to evolve and change every day. I think it would be a disservice to the people on the parts of newer Bluffton to not have somebody representing their voice on town council and just continue with status quo, the way that it's been. Um, and I look forward to, to building relationships and getting a better understanding of why things have been done the way that they have for so long. But, um, Bluffton's great. In order to keep it great, we have to keep moving forward in the right direction. We can't just stand still and let everyone blow past us. And that's what I hope to bring to the table.
Well, and I think, uh, you know, I, I've told you this before, but I've been following you, uh, for past couple of years and you have, have been an advocate for progress and, uh, you have not held back on the issues that you believe in. And, uh, I, I am a fan. Uh, so, uh, you know, I am hoping for all of the success. And I'm hoping that one day when you run for governor, that, uh, I'll be involved in your campaign.
Yes, yes. I think my third grade teacher would be thrilled to see where I am now. She wrote in my yearbook, she wrote to my little lawyer. So clearly, uh, I started on a path a long time ago that I certainly, uh, continue on today and hope to continue for a long time moving forward.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. So we have, uh, just a couple more minutes. Uh, I, I don't know if you've seen this or heard this segment yet, but it's called seven questions. Have you?
I'm familiar with the concept.
All right. So, uh, seven questions. First question, what was the last thing that you Googled?
Oh gosh. Honestly, probably like legal definitions for a bill at the state house.
Okay. All right. That's.
Not very glamorous. Sorry.
That's very studious. I am, I am impressed. I mean, you're going to be busy tomorrow and Wednesday.
Yes, yes.
Totally understand. All right. Second question, uh, if you could have one superpower, what would it be?
The ability to read people's minds.
Really?
Yeah. I am an over thinker by nature, and I think that if I could just read people's minds, maybe it would take a good portion, portion of that out for me.
See, I, so I will say, uh, that one of the things that I am most uncomfortable with is that I am extremely empathetic and being, uh, as observational, uh, basically, uh, being able to observe people's behavior and make a pretty good assessment of what type of person they are, what their, what their actions might be. And then my mind works in probabilities and numbers on virtually everything. So I, I, in my head, I'm almost constantly figuring out what people are going to do just based on the probability of the, of, of what I've observed. And, uh, so I feel like that almost tends to lean towards the idea that I can kind of read people's minds. Pretty uncomfortable with it. People are gross.
Yeah. Well, my therapist would love you because she always tells me when I start, when I start overthinking things, try to put a probability on how realistic that is, that that's actually going to happen. And you'll realize that it's not realistic at all. I need to let it go and move on. So you have to have a much better outlook than I do.
It's, uh, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it, it can be uncomfortable sometimes. I will, I will admit it. I, I would, I would say, so typically I think, I think a lot of the time when these questions are asked, people are like, I'd like, I'd like to fly or I'd, I'd, I'd like, uh, super strength or whatever. So, uh, being the, uh, I guess, uh, what's the, uh, who, who is the, uh, Dr. Xavier from the X-Men? He, he could read people's minds, I guess. Maybe. I don't know if that's what. That was a long time ago. Uh, all right. Third one, uh, was that the third one? No, this is the third one. Uh, what is your most embarrassing favorite song?
Oh my gosh. I mean, I don't know if it's embarrassing, but my most favorite song that no matter where you put it on, I will get on a table and sing it at the top of my lungs is I Want It That Way by The Backstreet Boys.
Okay. Nope.
Like no shame at all. Like I could be, it could be 15 years from now, and I think I would still get up on a table in a bar somewhere and scream that song at the roof, roof of my lungs, the roof of my lungs.
Top. Yeah. Yeah. From the, yeah, from the rafters. Uh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Being that I grew up during the time of the Backstreet Boys, I'm not sure I could tell you who was in there. Nick Lachey was a Backstreet Boy, right?
No, Nick Lachey was 98 Degrees. Nick Carter was the Backstreet Boys.
It doesn't help that a lot of them have the same names.
Which one? Man, you're killing me.
Which one was Justin Timberlake in?
NSYNC.
It's good gosh. Yeah. I'm terrible at this. You know what? Uh, I'm embarrassed. I should have, I, I should have known, I should have known that. All right. What? What was one thing that your parents did when you were younger that embarrassed you the most? Knowing that they're going to listen to this and they can, you, you can use this as a, I hated it when you did that. And here's.
Oh, well, I think my dad still does. So my dad's a rabbi. So he gives sermons every Friday night and without fail, every single week, even when I stopped living with him, I made my way into his sermon and it drove me nuts. Like you, you don't have to use me as an anecdote in every single one. And I would tell him that to his face. So I'm not ashamed to say that on this podcast.
That's good. That's good. All right. Uh, what is your least favorite candy flavor? Or what is your least favorite candy?
Reese's. I hate peanut butter and chocolate together.
Sacrilegious.
Hate. Will not, will not participate in that at all whatsoever.
Why? Do you like peanut butter?
I do like peanut butter and I like chocolate. I just don't like them together.
Are you one of those people that like your food has to stay separated? Like it can't touch?
Um, no, I got past that.
But okay, but it was at one point, it was, it was.
I used to be an extremely picky eater. I mean, I'm still pretty picky, but like extremely picky. But I like people who like take their Oreos and dump, dip it in peanut, oh my, what is, no, 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 absolutely not. My husband is probably hearing us on the other side of the wall laughing because that is his favorite and I hate it like viscerally.
Like what reaction? Like, let's say, let's say Phil walks in with, with a bag of, of Reese's. Like what's your reaction?
Like, great. Good for you. But like, do not ask me to participate in that.
It feels like it's, 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 it feels like it's almost an event. Like there's, there's been some sort of traumatic.
You would think, wouldn't you? No, I just have a very strong opinion about that.
That's great. All right. What, what is the one question that you wish that I had asked you?
I don't know. What's my, how did we come up with my dog's name? I don't know.
Okay. Yeah. Well, uh, tell, what, what's your dog's name?
Our dog is named Cameron. Um, named after Cam Newton.
Oh, thank God. I thought, I, I was so scared that it was going to be like Kirk Cameron or something like that. And, and, and while, and while I, 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 I will not take away from the early years of Kirk Cameron, which you may not have gotten to experience.
The latest, the latest Kirk Cameron's not for me.
What is wrong with him? Okay.
Sister Candace, you know, I just, I loved Full House.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Has she gone weird too?
Yeah.
Has she gone? Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, I guess that's why Fuller House got canceled.
Well, yeah. And I think like ends up in jail and yeah.
Oh yeah. Yeah. I forgot about, I forgot about, uh, good old aunt, aunt. I can't remember what her name is. Aunt Becky. I was thinking Aunt Jessie for some reason.
Yeah. And rest in peace, Bob Saget. Yeah. That show just fell apart at the seams.
I'll, I'll just say, I'll just say this real quick, that one of, one of the things that, that affects me the most is seeing comedians talk about Bob Saget and Norm MacDonald, uh, after their deaths, like that, because I loved Bob Saget, like not, not necessarily. I, I wasn't a huge Bob Saget fan from Full House. I enjoyed Bob Saget, the comedian.
See, that's so funny. We are so opposite on that. I only knew Bob Saget from Full House. So the day that I learned who Bob Saget really was, I mean, talk about like a life-changing experience.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah.
I, so the Bob Saget, the comedian was extremely blue. Like he was a, he was a very, he wasn't, he was a dirty comic. But the, I, I met Bob Saget twice when I worked in Atlanta in radio and one genuinely wanted, he was, he was the guy from, from Full House. Like that was who he was as a person, as a comedian, you know, he did what it took to get the laughs. I never got an opportunity to meet Norm MacDonald, but Norm MacDonald was easily one of the funniest people and not because, not because I felt like he was ever trying to be funny, but just because he would say things that were so uncomfortable. But he would do it as if he didn't know he did it. And, and it was, it was so entertaining. So, but, but seeing, but having, having comedian, like I watched Dave Chappelle's Dreamer. And, uh, and when he, when he talks about Norm MacDonald, uh, even though it's part of a different joke, when he talks about Norm MacDonald, it's like, it's like, gosh, it's, it's so, it's, it's difficult to think of a world without Norm MacDonald and Bob Saget in it. And ultimately when Willie Nelson goes, that's going to crush me. I'm going to be inconsolable for weeks.
It's never going to happen. That man is like, I, I don't, there, there's no way. Like I, but I felt the same way about Alex Trebek. So.
Oh, wow.
Jeopardy was like us. Oh, yeah. So my dad was on Jeopardy. So like Jeopardy, yeah, casual. Let's throw that in. My dad was on Jeopardy in 93. So Jeopardy was a staple in our house every night. So I have like a lot of useless knowledge in my brain because I spent a lot of time watching Jeopardy.
See, I have a friend that was on Maury and now I, I can't not go without watching Maury.
Same, same, but very different.
Very different. All right. Uh, last, last of the seven questions. What is the one question you're glad that I didn't ask? And I will preface this by saying, I cannot ask you this. So what's the one question that you, uh, you're glad that I didn't ask?
What I do for a living now, because I don't think I could sum it up in a way that makes sense to the normal, everyday person.
Good. No, that's a, that, no, that's a good answer. I, 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 that's, that's a terrific answer. I, I would, I would not have thought of that. Uh, Preach, uh, Preach Jacobs, when I interviewed him, uh, for the last episode, his answer was, I am, I'm glad you didn't ask me about my love life. So.
Oh.
You know.
Oh, well now I want to know, Preach?
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I, I warned him. I said, that's what's going to be coming up next. There is, it, it's entirely possible that, uh, that that may be what I ask the next time. So, uh, just, just be prepared there, Derek. All right. So, uh, Emily Mayer, uh, special election is Tuesday, uh, February 13th. Early voting for the special election will run from January 29th to February 9th, uh, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00 PM. So early voting will be available at the Bluffton Recreation Center. So, uh, again, I said this at the very, very beginning of the episode before Emily was on, check your voter registration. It's, it's too late to register a vote right now for the special election, but if you are registered, make sure your voter registration is up to date. You, you know where you're supposed to vote for the elections, everything, uh, because that'll benefit you when we get into, uh, the primaries as well as the general election coming up in November. So, the campaign website, Emily Mayer SC.com. Donations to Emily's campaign can be made through her website as well. You can follow Emily on Facebook, X formerly Twitter and Instagram. Uh, any, anywhere else they can, they can find you? You can follow Emily on Facebook, uh, X formerly Twitter and Instagram, uh, any, anywhere else they can, they can find you.
Uh, LinkedIn if they want to. Uh, again, I don't really know what I do for a living, so I don't really know how to post about it on LinkedIn.
Do you get paid for not knowing what you do for a living?
I do get paid for not.
That's great.
Can I make the last campaign push?
Please.
Um, so a lot of what I do for my job that I don't know how to describe is advocating for other people. Um, and while that is so fantastic and I love every second of it and makes it difficult for me to advocate for people and advocate for myself for my campaign at the same time. I can't literally be in Columbia at the state house advocating for families and in Bluffton talking to voters. So phone calls into voters is something you can do from anywhere. If you're interested in making phone calls for the campaign, please reach out and let me know. We'll get you plugged in with our call team, um, and start getting those calls into voters at a higher frequency while I am driving up and down ninety-five to Columbia.
So phone banking and, uh, uh, I assume you're probably looking for, you're, you're, you're looking for help on canvassing.
Yes, yes. Uh, we have a weekend of action coming up this next weekend, Martin Luther King. Um, we have folks making the trip from a bunch of different places, which is so humbling. I'm so touched that people are taking the time and the trip, um, to come enjoy Bluffton with me. Um, but yeah, I mean, because I've lived in a bunch of different communities and I've worked in a bunch of different communities, I have supporters outside of South Carolina too, who are like, what can I do to help? Phone calls, phone calls, phone calls would be so helpful. Um, cause every minute that I am advocating for other people is the minute that I cannot spend making phone calls or knocking on doors.
Yeah, and a lot of time, all it takes is that one contact. It takes that, that one, that one opportunity to, to sway someone in your direction where they will remember you.
Especially in a special election. I mean, the margins here, we could be talking about two or three votes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you don't wanna be waking up on Valentine's Day saying, dang, I wish I had done more to help Emily. Now you know how you can get involved.
Absolutely. Emily Mayer SC.com, uh, and they can get in touch with you through your website. There's, there's, there's links for email and things like that. So please do that. Emily, thank you very much for sitting down with me and, and being on the show. And, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, that either I'll be down that direction or you'll be up this direction and, uh, and we can actually get together and hang out some. So, uh, we will take advantage of that time, I promise.
Absolutely. And I'll bring out those videos from that Super Bowl.
Oh, Lord. Uh, if, if it doesn't, if it doesn't hurt my feelings too much, uh, to, to watch the reaction, uh, then, then yeah, I'm absolutely, absolutely for it. Absolutely for it. All right. Emily Mayer, thank you very much for being on the show. Uh, that's gonna do it for this episode of the All About Nothing Podcast. It's episode number one hundred and ninety. We are really close to two hundred. And thank you to everybody that listens, uh, and supports the show. Because if it weren't for the fact that there were, you know, five or six of you listening every week, uh, I don't know that I'd keep doing it. So, uh, you know, keep sharing and, and posting, follow us. Links to past episodes, podcast platforms, merchandise and social media are available on our webpage, theallaboutnothing.com. And if you think our financial model of giving away free content and entertainment is silly and you're in the giving mood, why not become an official nothinger by supporting the show on a monthly basis? Members can get early access to episodes as well as exclusive content or make a one-time donation through our same link, uh, the tips link. And, uh, if you'd like to be a part of the show, you can call and leave a message, eight oh three six seven two zero five three three. You can email the show at, uh, theshow@theallaboutnothing.com. Or you can join our Discord server. There are links available at theallaboutnothing.com. Thank you very much for listening. You all stay safe and, uh, have a great week.
The All About Nothing Podcast is produced and engineered by me, Barrett Gruber. Thanks to Cake for our intro music, Sick of You. You can follow Everything Cake, the band at cakemusic.com. Thanks to Muff the Producer for our outro music. You can follow Muff on Instagram, at Muff the Producer. I am Barrett Gruber. You can follow me on Instagram and Twitter, at Barrett Gruber, or visit my link tree slash Barrett Gruber. Wanna support the show, visit our webpage, theallaboutnothing.com and become a member. There are several tiers available, including memberships that give you early access to episodes as well as exclusive content. Visit theallaboutnothing.com. Find links to our social media, merchandise and past episodes, visit theallaboutnothing.com. If you'd like to be heard on the show, you can call and leave us a message, dial eight oh three six seven two zero five three three. If the time between these episodes is more than you can handle, check out our partner podcast. Zach and I host What the Pod Was That with Kerry Simmons. Visit whatthepodwasthat.com for links and details. And me takes a deep dive down the rabbit hole in episodes of Welcome to Wonderland, available on all the podcast platforms. Visit W T W L pod dot com for details. As well, you can listen to the political and social conversation between Dr. Jamella Brooks and Bill Kimmler on Black, White and Blue in the South. Available wherever you listen to podcasts. Please subscribe and share this show. If you're on YouTube, please like and hit the notification bell. Thank you for listening. The preceding podcast is a product of Big Media and copyright twenty twenty-four, all rights reserved. This episode of the All About Nothing Podcast is brought to you by Blank Canvas Brand. If you own a business, restaurant or sports team and you're ready to shake things up with that new, unique image, you need to use Blank Canvas Brand. Blank Canvas specializes in brand identity, including logos and graphics for business cards, flyers, banners and signs. Blank Canvas offers printing services to help with your clothing needs. Look, when it comes to talent and service, there is no one better. For more information, you can search Facebook for Blank Canvas or you can email blankcanvas@theallaboutnothing.com. That's B L N K C A N V S at theallaboutnothing.com. You can find links in the friends of the pod section of our website. Visit theallaboutnothing.com.